Yes, I can hear you.
I don't know if I'm on here.
Can you hear me?
I heard you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone that has joined the meetings, this is for staff, commissioners, and the public. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. And we have to have a quorum of commissioners, which would be six, before we can hold this public hearing. At this time, I am only seeing five. So until we get on. Okay, I have good news. That was Commissioner Williams. She is trying to get on right now. As soon as she does, we will start the meeting. In the meantime, I would like to ask everyone to turn off their cameras and mute their microphones, please. Okay, I think we still have a camera that is turned on. There, it looks like we've got two unknown users that whose camera is on. So again, I'll just put out that all cameras must be turned off and all mics must be muted. It looks like the camera that is on belongs to Sharon. Okay, I think we're good now. We do still have one unknown user with their camera on. No, we have two. Mr. McNeeley, I'm still not seeing Commissioner Williams on. I do have a message from her that says that she is waiting to get let back in.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see Mr. Frank Tigerwald. Could you turn your camera off, please? I do not see anyone trying to get in, and I, and normally I would. I would see that.
Okay. All right. And again, I'm just going to request that everyone, all participants, turn their cameras off and please mute your mics. I'm reaching out to her, Mr. McNeeley.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Jess, is Vice Chair Burton here?
No, Vice Chair Burton and Commissioner Walsh knew they would not be able to attend today's meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And I am not. Commissioner Williams is saying she's trying to be let back in. And I'm not seeing anyone who needs let in.
She did just notify me that she is. She's going to cancel and try again.
Yeah, I think that's what she needs to do.
Mr. McNeeley, do you have any suggestions that I could share with Commissioner Williams? She is trying to get on. Do you think it would be? Do you think we should send her perhaps a new link?
There was a request that briefly appeared from her to get access.
Mm-hmm.
So she's. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I did send her a new link just a few moments ago.
Okay, great. Okay, and while we're waiting, I will ask Rebecca Collett if you could please turn your camera off. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Williams is going to try the new link, so hopefully that's going to work, and she's going to be with us in just a minute.
Madam Chair, this is Rob Wilson. I need to take a two-minute timeout here. I'll be right back.
Okay. We'll be here. Mr. McNeeley, do you have a suggestion?
Oh, I see Commissioner Williams is now in.
I'm in, in too. Yay. Okay, great, Commissioner Williams. All we need to do, Commissioner Wilson said that he would be back in two minutes. So as soon as he gets back and indicates he is here, I will call the meeting to order.
Madam Chair, I am back.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And Commissioner Williams is now with us. So my clock shows 5:40 PM, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to start by reading the meeting rules and procedures. So, welcome to the May 29, 2024, meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your cameras. And I also want to mention that the comment function is, excuse me, is not for discussion. It is only for communicating with staff if you are having some kind of a connectivity issue. With that, thank you all for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please stand. Mr. McNeeley, would you please lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the April 24, 2024 minutes. If there are no corrections, I will accept a motion and a second, please, for approval.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the April 24 meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Williams for approval of the April 24, 2024 minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The first item on the public hearings this evening is case number CUP 24013. It is a request for a conditional use permit for a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence and has a recommendation by staff for approval. Are there any commissioners who want to discuss this case? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address this case this evening. Seeing none, I am going to close it to public comments since there was none, and I will accept a motion and a second for approval on this item, please.
I'll move that we approve CUP-24-013 with the conditions.
I'll second Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Commissioner Best for approval of CUP 24013 with conditions as written in the staff report. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The second item on the agenda this evening is case number ZC-23004.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob Short of our case is managing the zone change. He already has his screen shared, so Bob, go ahead and present the case.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the 3Gs Homestead Zone Change. In this case, the property owners are Frederick and Barbara Garcia of Chino Valley, Arizona. The applicant is Jamie Garcia Williams. The location of the property is on Pine Springs Road, 1.3 miles west of the Devil Dog Road Interchange on Interstate 40. The zoning is general, 10-acre minimum parcel size. That's the current zoning. The size is 23.8 acres, and the request is a zone change from the general zone to the AR-7 zone to allow the property to be divided into three parcels, and each of those parcels would be 7.9 acres. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see, for context, you can see Williams to the east, and Ashburg is actually to the west, not too far. This is McClellan Reservoir right here. It's a small little lake on the way down to Ashburg from Williams. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. You can see Interstate 40 coming through here. This is an old railroad right-of-way that is throughout this area, and that's used as access. It's a road now, and the subject property has access to that, as well as to Pine Springs down here. And also note that the property line goes right through the middle of that pond. This is a zoning map showing the zoning in the local area. You can see that that is the old railroad right-of-way is zoned open space, and then otherwise, we have the general zone. All these Gs represent generals, just like the subject property. This is a site plan showing the proposal. So if the zone change is approved, then they would like to split it into three different parcels. The two parcels on this end to the north would access off of this easement. You can see they come down and create a cul-de-sac as required by our code. So you would have one access to these two, and the other one would come off of Pine Springs down here. There's a big hill right here, really hard to get down to this parcel, and that's why they would access off of this instead, are one of the reasons. This is a picture of the subject property looking. This is from Pine Springs Road, so you can look back across the meadow, and you can see the pond down here. This rises steeply up from this point to the west. This is the pond on the property, and as I said, the pond goes right through the middle of the pond. And this is from the higher point on the property, looking back. That's Bill Williams' mountain back there. All right, in terms of citizen participation, property owner is within 5,000 feet. That's almost a mile. We're notified of the zone change, and the applicant in this case had two meetings, or actually two opportunities to come to the property and discuss the case. Those are on December 29 and the 30th of 2023. The reason we went out so far is because, as you can see, there weren't very many properties in the area, so we made sure, staff made sure that properties anywhere close to here were notified of this, of this case. One property owner attended the meeting, and the concern of that property owner is that a future owner of the property might ask for another zone change and divide the property into even smaller lots. Of course, that would have to come back through you and also be approved by the Board of Supervisors, and that probably wouldn't be supported by staff. This is the findings for a zone change. I've addressed those in the staff report. And this is some staff analysis. The zone change would provide additional housing. That's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It would allow three parcels where two are currently allowed, so it only allows one more parcel. It's not a huge difference from what's there now. The other thing is that it would, the parcels would be almost eight acres. They'd be 7.9 acres in size. So that's very similar to the general zone. So this would not, I can now see that this would adversely affect the character of the surrounding neighborhood, which is one of the findings for a zone change. And with that, staff recommends the commission boards a recommendation of approval of ZC-23004 to the Board of Supervisors. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Mr. Short, I'm just curious, the surrounding properties are zoned. I missed that, perhaps. Are they general or?
Yes, there, Commissioner Wilson, they are zoned general.
So that's 10-acre minimums?
Yeah, so these are all 10-acre minimums.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Short, I am not seeing any other hands raised by the commissioners. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening. Mr. Short, do you know if the applicant is with us?
Hi, this is Jamie Garcia.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
Sorry, I was waiting for me to raise my hand on this. I really don't have anything to say unless somebody has a question about, you know, why we're trying to do it or what our plans are.
Okay, let me see. Do any of the commissioners, Ms. Garcia, also for the record, could I ask you to state your address, please?
My physical address is 935 South Cypress Point, Williams, Arizona.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Garcia this evening? All right, seeing none, Ms. Garcia, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment, should there be any. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand. And seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public comment portion and open it up for commission discussion. Commissioner Wilson, would you please start us off this evening?
I can make the findings, and I'm happy to see a family living together like this.
Thank you. Commissioner Tohe?
I would like to ditto the commissioner with family staying together and living together and taking care of the land together. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Williams, I think you're muted. Yeah, you are.
Oh, yes, I am.
It's okay.
I can make the findings for recommending this zone change.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
This seems very reasonable, and I can make this findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, I have to state that I visited the property with staff. Second thing is that I can make the findings. I think this is a reasonable zone change, given the area. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also can support this and can make all of the findings, so with that, I will accept a motion and a second to send this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Madam Chair, I move that we forward Zone Change-ZZ-Zulu Charlie-23-004 to the Board of Supervisors recommending approval.
I second that. Commissioner Tohe?
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Tohe to make a recommendation of approval for ZC-23004. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras, and the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is case number DRO-24-003. And before it is presented, I would like to disclose that I was at the Pandrosa Fire Department in Belmont on a completely unrelated matter, and I did tour this, the fire department there, so I have a very good idea of how this is going to look. With that, I would like to ask staff to please present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Pandrosa Fire District Station 82 Storage Building. That's DRO-24003. And in this case, the property owner is the Pandrosa Fire District of Belmont, Arizona. The applicant is Fire Chief Lee Antonides of Belmont, Arizona. Location of this fire station, this property, is 11951 Shadow Mountain Drive in Belmont. The zoning is PC Planned Community Zone, and in this case, CH 10,000, that's commercial heavy 10,000 square foot minimum parcel size. Standards have been applied to this parcel. Size of the parcel is 1.4 acres, and the request is a design review for a storage building. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property surrounded in kind of magenta color right there in the middle of Belmont. And this is some background in this case, so back in 2021, an expansion, a DRO was approved for the expansion of the Pandrosa Fire Station, a number 82. That DRO included placing siding on an existing metal storage container on the site, screening it with landscaping, and also painting a small shed on the site. The applicant is now proposing to remove the metal storage container and shed and replace them with this storage building instead. So I think many of the commissioners can remember this. There are new commissioners here that wouldn't, so I'll show you more here as we go. So this is the, an aerial photo, and you can see back here, this is the storage container right here, and the shed is right next to it. So this is also the location where they would put the new storage building. This is a site plan, shows the existing station. This is the extension on the station that I think is almost completed at this point. And this is the, where the storage building would be. It's 24 by 36, 15 feet tall. This is the, they call it Conex Box, metal storage container that would be removed. You see the little shed here would be removed as well. And this is a picture of those, so you know, it would appear that the storage building would meet the standards of the Belmont design guidelines much more than these have, even with those improvements possibly. So this is a color rendering of that storage building. This is not the proposed storage building. This is not at the exact size, but I think with the width, it's pretty close. So it's 24 feet wide, 36 feet long. But as you can see, it's in this nice brown color that matches the extension very well. So you can see, this is the extension that Uh, so you can see this is the extension that was approved by the commission in twenty twenty-one. And note that it, it matches very well. It would be located right behind the building, so it could probably be seen from the street, but not from the front very well. And this is the only proposed light that there is in this application. It is a solar light. And the reason for this is that the applicant doesn't, uh, propose any electric for this building. So they need to have solar lights. Uh, they are not required to have a solar light or any kind of light at all if they don't have electric in the building. I confirmed that with the building division today. Now, this light would be, uh, very low lumen. It would be fifty lumens, which is very light. That's about a tenth the light of a forty watt bulb. So it'd also be dark sky compliant. And it would be over the door of the storage building. And a lighting permit would be required before they could install this. In terms of citizen participation, in the case of DROs, a neighborhood meeting is not required. Uh, the county staff is required to notify property owners within three hundred feet of the application and of the hearing. So that has happened. Staff did receive one comment today very late and we forwarded that on to the commission, so you saw that. Uh, the primary concern is that the building would obstruct the view of the mountains uh, from the subject, from this person's property. And I'll show you where he is just real quickly so you get an idea. Actually, right here. So this house right here is, uh, the property of that commenter. Now, I do want to point out that this building is permitted by right. So the only thing the commission is really considering in this case is the design of the building and whether it meets the design guidelines of the Belmont Area Plan. So the consideration as to whether a building can be here is not, is not part of, of what the commission is, is looking at tonight. All right, so as I said, uh, approval of a design review overlay, a DRO does not, does not have any findings. It is basically the commission must determine the development is consistent with the Belmont Area Plan Design Guidelines and those are can, those are listed in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of DRO twenty-four zero zero three with the recommended conditions. And, uh, part of this, I think there are only two conditions. The second one indicates that the conditions applied to the previous DRO that required that siding be placed on the metal storage container, landscaping be planted around it. Those are removed and that is, that is condition number two in your staff report. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Short. Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Mr. Short, could you go back to the site plan slide there for us quickly? Yep. Doesn't appear there's gonna be any driveway or access to this building at all. Is that there in temp?
Uh, this is actually pavement right here.
Oh.
This is all paved. So it looks like they would access right into here and, uh, uh, Chief, uh, Antonides is here. He couldn't explain that better, but, but there is pavement in this area. Well, let's go back. We go back and look at the building. Yeah, so you can see, yeah, this is the pavement right here.
Okay.
So it's gonna be right in this area.
Okay, uh, Mr. Short, I am not seeing any other commissioners' hands raised. So I am going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would just ask if you have received the staff report and understand the recommended conditions that go with us.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Lee Antonides. I'm the Fire Chief of Pandrosa Fire District. My address is one three five Copper Canyon Loop, Camp Verde, Arizona. I'd like to, uh, thank the commissioners for hearing this request. Um, as Mr. Short stated, this has been, uh, kind of a long haul for us. We've been trying to figure out different ways to improve the aesthetics as well as the functionality of this project. Um, the original request by some of the neighbors were that we, um, go ahead and build a, a regular building as opposed to the metal storage container and the old dilapidated shed. Uh, through our process of doing this and in conjunction with our current project, uh, it was decided that we would try to move forward with the blessing of the commission and the Board of Supervisors to build an actual building that will be more, better served for us as well as much more appealing to our neighbors, which is quite important to us. Uh, with that said, I would be happy to answer any questions to the commissioners.
Madam Chair, if you're talking, we're not hearing you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And I was talking. Um, thank you, Chief Lee. Uh, I'm, I do not see any other hands raised, uh, for questions, so I am going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion. Uh, Commissioner Wilson, would you please start us off?
I would recommend approval of this DRO.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe?
I would say the same thing. I would, I support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Um, yeah, I can recommend approval as well.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Best?
I also can recommend approval.
Um, okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
I do have to disclose that I have visited the site with staff and agree with their assessment for this. And I can make the findings for this, uh, DRO, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Chair Antiveras. Um, I also support, uh, this DRO and can move forward with approval. So with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
Madam Chair, I recommend we approve DRO two four dash zero zero three as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Williams for approval of DRO two four dash zero zero three. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveras. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The final item on our agenda this evening is, at least for the public hearings, is case number CUP two four zero zero nine.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This was just with staff and this is a conditional use permit for a campground. Zach Schwartz with our staff is managing this case. I see he already has his screen shared, so Zach, if you could give the presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. In this case is CUP twenty-four zero zero nine. It's the Minich Campground case. The property owner and applicant is Zach Minich. And the property is located at sixteen seventy-three East Spring Valley Road in Red Lake area. The parcel size for the subject property is ten point zero three acres. And the zoning for the property is the general zone. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a seven unit campground. So here is a vicinity map and this is the boundary of the city of Williams. Over here on the right side of your screen is Highway sixty-four coming up from Williams. And if you take a right on Spring Valley Road, very soon after on the left is the subject property, uh, which is surrounded by other properties in the general zone. Some of them developed with homes and some of them not. And here is an aerial of the subject property and some of the closer properties in proximity. So Spring Valley Road, uh, is right along the southeastern portion of the property. This is a county maintained road, so it is paved and full, fully taken care of by the county. Uh, this is the subject property boundaries. It's almost maybe a diamond shape. And you can see on this aerial that it's very heavily vegetated. These are about ten to twelve, maybe even taller, uh, foot, um, pinion juniper. And on this map, you can also see some of the existing residences of neighboring properties. So here's one across the street, a little bit further across the street. Uh, one further northeast up here and one further south closer in on Spring Valley. Here is a photo of the subject property from the street. So you can see just how tall some of this vegetation is here. Here's a vehicle to show you a little bit scale there. Um, and I did want to let you know, I think in a future slide, you'll see on the site plan, there's quite a bit of topography. So this is the low point and the topography is going kind of up to the northwest. So, uh, some background about the case is on August first, twenty twenty-three, uh, the applicant was given a notice of violation from our Code Compliance Division for operation of a campground without an approved conditional use permit. Uh, the applicant promptly attended the requisite pre-application meeting, uh, that's required before you submit for the conditional use permit. They did that two weeks after the notice of violation. And since that time, code compliance has not seen any operation, uh, of the campground on this site. But I did want to show you in these photos will appear a little bit better in your staff report. Some of the existing, uh, construction on the property. So there are tent platforms, a yurt on the platform, existing restroom structure and an existing covered yoga deck that are still on the property. Those will need to be, if the commission approves this case, those will need to be fully building permitted. And in the case of the restroom, environmental quality division permitted prior to, uh, restarting that use. So as far as proposed development and operation, this would be a commercial campground that would be operating seasonally for one hundred and eighty days per year. Uh, it includes six tents, so one of them being a yurt, a few bell tents. And then, uh, one or two of the platforms, you could bring your own tents. Guests could bring their own tent, uh, and erect it on the platform. All of these are shown on the applicant's site plan as being at least fifty feet from any property boundary. And the applicant is currently under construction. Uh, there's a single family dwelling currently under construction on the subject property. The applicant did have, uh, a building permit issued for that single family dwelling. And then other development would include the yoga deck that you had seen on the slide before. Uh, communal restroom and shower structure that you'd seen. And two twenty-foot metal storage containers that you'll see on the site plan. On the next slide, they're pretty close to the front of the property. As far as operation, the owner couple would stay on site to manage the campground. They would live in that single family dwelling. Uh, they would have up to twelve guests, so two per tent, uh, maximum. And they would operate with quiet hours from eight PM to nine AM. Wastewater would be accomplished through a combination of septic and composting toilets. And there would be no generators because APS, uh, does serve the site. So here is the site plan. Right now, there's a dirt driveway coming up from Spring Valley Road. Uh, a circle type driveway. These are the two twenty-foot metal storage containers here. And this is the home, I believe it's under six hundred square feet that's being constructed on the property. There's also an underwater or an underground water storage tank here. And then each of these symbols would be one of those tent units, so six of them. Uh, the bathroom facilities are here. And there is an eight-frame shed in this area, so it wouldn't be for occupancy, this shed. And I believe in their discussions with High Country Fire, that we'll get into a little bit later in the presentation, they, it was recommended to them that they have a twenty-five hundred gallon emergency water storage tank placed here. Uh, so, so that's what they're showing for the site plan. And I briefly mentioned topography in a previous slide. So each of these lines, these topographic lines represents a seven-foot elevation change. And so the high point is here and topography comes pretty steeply down in this direction towards Spring Valley Road. So these are elevations just so that you can get a sense of, uh, the size of the structures, the top being the yurt and the bottom one being the bell tents that are proposed. And as far as zoning ordinance, uh, requirements for campgrounds regarding landscaping, the applicant didn't submit a formal landscape plan, but the existing pinion juniper, uh, is pretty dense on the property and it would meet the typical zoning ordinance requirements for landscaping. Uh, regarding lighting, the applicant didn't submit a full lighting plan, but generally, these are pretty minimal for a campground. And staff would review a lighting permit for dark skies requirements prior to a building permit being issued or any occupancy being allowed. And as far as signage, the applicant's narrative states that they are not looking to have any signage. But in the case that they do want to have that in the future, if this case is approved, uh, staff has recommended a condition that I meet the normal requirements for the general zone, which is quite low because it's primarily a single-family residential zone. And as far as fire safety and emergency services plan, the applicant is currently working with High Country Fire Rescue to get a subscription to their service and to develop the plan. Uh, there was a letter attached to the staff report that states that the fire chief wants to have some changes done to the driveway area so that his vehicles can get into the site. And so the applicant will need to get the subscription, take care of that issue and any other issue that the, um, fire chief identifies as needing to be done in order to obtain their fire service and for the property to be fire safe, they'll need to be doing that prior to issuance of building permits and occupancy of the site. And additional zoning ordinance requirements for campgrounds are shown on this matrix here that was included in your staff report. And it's pretty boilerplate, um, information. A lot of this is not applicable for this, uh, particular campground, but I did want to highlight for you that the zoning ordinance through a condition permit would allow in the general zone up to twenty units. The applicant's only asking for seven, uh, so that, that's six tents and the single family dwelling is included in the density, the way that the campground section of the zoning ordinance is written. So they're only looking for seven and staff is recommending a condition that would hold them to the seven units. And also, it's pretty rare for a campground to be accessed directly on a county maintained road. So the applicant would still need to go through an encroachment permit to make sure that the driveway safety, um, works out, but, uh, that's also just something I wanted to highlight for this particular case. As far as long-range plan conformance, there are two plans that are applicable for this area. And those are the comprehensive plan and the Red Lake area plan. And in the staff report, I detailed a number of goals and policies that are relevant for this case. But I'll just summarize them here unless the commission has any questions on that. So generally, the comprehensive plan supports commercial development that's compatible with the character of the surrounding area. It supports non-polluting industry and commercial enterprises. And it supports tourist-related developments that can serve and showcase the natural environment. And the Red Lake area plan supports developments that are sensitive to the protection of existing natural vegetation. But it also asks for the commission to consider impacts such as noise, dust and visual impacts in review of conditional use permits. So getting into citizen participation, the applicant notified property owners within a half mile of the subject property uh, of this request and, uh, held a meeting to of this request and held a meeting to get input on the request. So that was a hundred and two property owners and the applicant had the meeting over Zoom at eight A M. on November eighth, twenty twenty-three. There was also a follow-up in person with one of the adjacent neighbors at two P M. that day in person. So ten people attended that meeting and five spoke. And the five had concerns about traffic increase and traffic safety, noise, trash. They had concerns about the wastewater, whether it was approved. Concerns about the lighting on the property and dark skies requirements, the risk of fire. And they did mention property values, which I want to remind the commission that property values are very speculative and they shouldn't be used in the making or not making findings for this request. Continuing on with citizen participation, so staff received two letters opposed to this request that were included in the packet and they noted all of the concerns that were mentioned in the applicant's citizen participation plan. But they also mentioned wildlife impacts. They were concerned about a density of twenty units. And again, I'll just mention that this is just seven that are requested and conditioned for this case. They were concerned about signage, stormwater runoff, community character, removal of existing trees, erosion and lack of sheriff presence in the area. I received two letters yesterday after the packet was sent and I emailed those to the commission. So they basically echoed the same concerns and one of the neighbors provided some notes that suggested that they thought that this request was inconsistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and the Red Lake area plan. Today I received and emailed to the commission three letters in support of this case and one of them was signed by a Williams resident but didn't specify an address and two others had been guests at this campground and they didn't reference any addresses either. But they did notice that guests are quiet and respectful and that this use provides a valuable tourism asset as well as a place for people to come and connect with nature. So on this slide, I just wanted to show you of the letters that I received opposed where those are located in proximity to the subject property. So this is the subject property. There's opposition on this parcel here right across the street. This parcel here, crossing down the street. This parcel here, which is further down and I believe it's accessed via Gold Trap Trail. And then there was a letter signed on by two neighbors in this area further down Spring Valley Road. Regarding the findings of fact, I wanted to read aloud because there is some controversy with this case, what the findings are and staff's responses to them. So for the audience, for the audience's knowledge, the commission has to make all four of these findings in order to approve this case. And so finding A, which is the first finding, is that the proposed location of the conditional use is in accord with the objectives of this ordinance and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. And staff's response to that is that campgrounds are permissible under a conditional use permit in the general zone. The purpose of the general zone is primarily for low-density residential, but also for uses that are complementary and compatible with a rural environment. Staff finds that the use as proposed and with the recommended conditions of approval would be in accordance with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and of the purpose of the zone. Second finding is that the proposed location of the conditional use and the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public safety, health or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And staff's response to that is that the requested use with the conditions recommended by staff is relatively low-impact and consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Nearby single-family residential properties are buffered from the use by distance, topography, vegetation or a combination of those factors. Traffic is not expected to significantly change and the applicant proposes quiet hours between nine P M. and eight A M. The third finding is that the proposed conditional use will comply with each of the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance except for approved variances. And staff's response to that is that all requirements of the zoning ordinance are met with one waiver to allow for existing vegetation in lieu of additional landscaping for the subject property. Staff finds that the retention of existing landscaping condition recommended below meet the criteria for approval of the waiver. And the fourth and final finding is that the proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives and policies from the general plan or specific plan for the area. And as I had gone over in a previous slide, staff does find that this case is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Red Lake area plan. And I did want to go over with the commission just generally on this slide, what each condition is about. This isn't the exact wording. This is just briefly going over it, but if the commission has any questions on the condition-specific language, I'm happy to throw that up on the screen. They're primarily the same as as were approved for the last two campgrounds with just the two that are highlighted in green, they're a little bit different from what was previously approved. And number three, that's typically the condition that deals with improving and maintaining the road up to, in this case, maybe Highway sixty-four. But in this case, because the property fronts on Spring Valley Road, which is a county maintained road, they don't need to improve that paved road. And then the other exception is condition number ten. So there, the two metal storage containers near the front of the property. You probably couldn't see it well in the picture that I threw on the screen and that I also had in the staff report. But from certain vantage points, you could see them somewhat and they're a color that stands out a little bit. So staff is recommending in this case that they paint the metal storage containers green. And in that case, with the lush sort of pinion juniper that you saw in that photo, that should make the metal storage containers blend in really well. But with that, if the commission can make the required findings of fact, staff recommends approval of C U P twenty-four zero zero nine with the eighteen conditions recommended in the staff report. And I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Schwartz for that presentation. I do see questions. I have some of my own, but it's possible they are going to be answered through this. So Commissioner Ruggles, would you please go ahead? And Commissioner Ruggles, you're muted.
Thank you. I have one thing to mention about the satellite view. It's a little bit out of date. The property that abuts the property for which the C U P is requested is already built. The building permit was issued in twenty nineteen and indicated that that is the approximate date of completion. I noticed the house there when I visited the site. So that's why I say the map looked a little bit odd to me when I looked at it because it's quite a bit out of date. Okay, the other thing for you, Zach, is were there any other specifics that you know of in terms of the enforcement action taken on the lack of a C U P? Noise, traffic, anything like that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Ruggles. My understanding was that the complaint was that they were operating without a campground use and not that there were any specific impacts that caused the complaint.
Okay, that's pretty much it for me. So, thank you.
Okay, this is Chair Antivarius, Commission, or excuse me, Mr. Schwartz. Can you bring up the map that you had with the stars on it showing what properties are developed? And the reason that I'm having you do this is I want to be sure that I understand Commissioner Ruggles' comments that all of them are starred. Commissioner Ruggles, can you look at this and verify accuracy? Or are we missing one that has not been identified? Commissioner Ruggles?
There we go. There we go. Back on.
Yeah, you're good.
If you look at the property for which the C U P is being requested. Okay, to the south, you can see an open area there that is now built.
Okay, so there needs to be like an additional yellow star there on that property. Got it?
To indicate that the property is occupied. House there, that's what you would want. That was the first thing I noticed because it is significantly uphill from the property that we are looking at a C U P for.
Okay, so and Mr. Schwartz, I I'm going to correct myself here. The stars indicated property owners who were in opposition, not necessarily properties that have been developed. Am I right with that?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, so that there is another developed, so pretty much all of the properties around it, it's are well, many of them are developed. Okay, Commissioner Best.
Thank you. There will be a fire safety and emergency response plan generated through the appropriate fire authorities. And so I've got a question about that. It would be fairly normal for us to specify driveway standards. But are we going to let the fire safety and emergency response plan handle that? Same question with evacuation. One of the people in opposition pointed out that these folks are going to be picking up people. There may not be a lot of cars. Is there going to be some organized way to evacuate everybody since some of the people may not have cars? And it just the general access up to the top of this hill. It doesn't look like you're going to get a vehicle up to the highest camping spot. And also, what's going to happen with the twenty-five-hundred-gallon tank? So these are all questions that you can just say that this is all going to be resolved with the fire safety plan and then we will let that go.
So Madam Chair, Commissioner Best, if I heard there were three different questions, one about the driveway standards in relation to fire safety, one regarding evaluation, sorry, evacuation plan and one about up the hill, the access to that, will they be covered by the Firewise and Emergency Access Plan? Is that correct?
Yes, covered one way or another, either by getting water up there from the tank or being able to drive up there.
Sure, yeah, so the driveway itself is going to be covered in two different ways. One through as the fire chief letter had already sort of discussed, there were already comments on the driveway access and safety. So that's definitely something that the fire chief's already looking at. The fire chief, by the way, is for a High Country Fire, which is in the if we can have everybody from the audience, please mute themselves. That'd be great. Thank you. So the driveway will be covered by the fire chief has already made comments on it. And also the encroachment permit from the engineering division of our department will also look at that. Fire safety plans typically do have an evacuation portion of it. And if that's something that the commission is particularly concerned about, then I can personally talk to the fire chief about that concern. And I'm sure that the fire chief would be happy to make sure that that's thoroughly planned out as well. And I also believe the that the water storage tank that was recommended at the top of the hill. That's been pretty thoroughly looked at by the chief and that's something that I can talk to him about as well. But I think that the chief is considering all of these aspects of the Firewise and Emergency or Fire Safety and Emergency Plan as we move forward.
Okay, well, then I would formally request that you mention evacuation to the chief. And it sounds like everything else is covered. From a noise point of view, we haven't specified noise standards. And maybe other commissioners might chip in if we should do a fifty decibels at the property line. I think I'm going to suggest a condition regarding noise a little later on, but it won't be fifty decibel. So when we get to commission comments, we can deal with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Ruggles, you are, your hand is still up. Did you have any, any other additional questions?
No, I don't. Other, well, one additional comment, I believe, for campground. Don't we have a fifty D B A limit at the property line in the code?
I believe we do. Mr. Schwartz, could you please confirm that?
Absolutely. I'm looking through right now. And I do believe it is in there.
Okay, then that's one other point we don't have to put on the debate list for commission discussion then. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Mr. Schwartz, while you're looking for that, I'm going to go ahead and move to Commissioner Wilson for his questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Schwartz, I'm curious. We discussed the fire emergency plan, but perhaps not an emergency medical situation. It appears on the site plan, there's going to be fairly narrow pathways going up a relatively steep hill that could make a medical evacuation a pretty challenging event. Is that being addressed by the fire chief or is that something else?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Williams, or sorry, Wilson. So there are certified E M Ts involved with High Country Fire Rescue, which is why they have the rescue part of their name. So they are also looking at the ambulatory type needs as well. And there may be some challenges on this site that haven't yet been addressed or looked at by the fire chief. But definitely it's going to need his approval prior to getting any sort of occupancy for this use. And I did just generally for the commission want to say that I did find the fifty-decibel limit is in the code. So it is something that is already part of the requirements of this case.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. This is Chair Antivarius. And, Mr. Schwartz, my question is, I read the letters of opposition and one of the biggest concerns is that of fire. Can you tell me how many fire pits are being proposed on this property?
Madam Chair, so I don't, the applicant didn't show fire pits on this property. And my assumption was that there were going to be a couple. But that was one other thing that I in the zoning ordinance, it has a number of things that should be looked at for the fire chief, including the design and the number and placement of fire pits. So that's another thing that I was waiting to get some input on the fire chief about.
Okay. So, so we do not know what the applicant is actually proposing.
I don't have, they didn't show anything on the site plan, the applicant might be able to answer that for you when it's their time.
Okay, and that is good, I will post that question to the applicant. I'm going to ask if the commissioners have any further questions for staff at this time. Seeing none, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would address the commission. Please state your name and address for the record. I would like to ask if you have received the staff report, if you understand the recommended conditions that have been stated. And also if you could address the questions that you have heard us bring up with staff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and the commission. My name is Zachary Minnick at 1673 East Spring Valley Road. I'm sitting here with my wife Carolyn Hoffman. She lives at the same address, we are a husband and wife team, and we've lived on Spring Valley Road since 2011. We plan, plan to maintain our values of peace and quiet, respect and conservation of nature and living simply. We wish to use this retreat to share those values with others. I'm excited to answer any questions and concerns that you have. I do understand the conditions that the commission has put forth, and I would also like to address the, this issue of the fires. I have brought up the issue of the fire pits with Chief Trotter at High Country Fire. And he has not gotten back on to me yet on what he would prefer. And he, what we have been talking about is whether or not we're going to have several fire pits or just one main fire pit for the entire camp. So this is something I'm working with Chief Trotter with, and he's a little bit hard to get a hold of sometimes. Which other questions did the commission have for me?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Minnick, this is Charant Tiveris. I think you answered my question, which was how many fire pits you are proposing. So I know you've said that you have, basically, you're looking at what Chief Trotter is going to recommend. You don't have a request of Chief Trotter for a certain amount?
No, Chief Trotter, I requested for Chief Trotter to have one fire pit per campsite. But Chief Trotter mentioned that he might require me to have one central fire pit, and I'm just happy to do whatever Chief Trotter thinks is the best for the community.
Okay, okay, and actually, right there, you did answer, I think, the question that I was trying to get at, which is how many you're asking for. So you are proposing, you would like to have six on there, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Yeah, yes, six with, six very nice, very safe, with very strict fire bans.
Okay, okay, that's all the questions that I have. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Mr. Minnick, I'm curious to know that a 25 gallon water tank near the top of the hill would provide, I guess, some gravity feed. But I'm not clear exactly how that would be implemented in a fire situation. Can you expound on that for me, please?
I was just talking with Chief Trotter, he made it aware that he would like to have additional water source at the rear of the property as a gravity fed situation, or possibly with a pump. Again, this is something that I'm still working with Chief Trotter, and I'm just going to do whatever he recommends in this case. I just put the, the water tank on the site plan because he mentioned wanting to have other water sources throughout the property.
Thank you.
Okay, do any commissioners have any additional questions of the applicant at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand, I will call on you, ask that you state your name and address for the record. And I also ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. McNeeley, would you please time the comments and give a warning at one minute?
Will do, Madam Chair, and Madam Chair, also seen a couple of hands going up. We do have several people who have called in by phone. They may not be able to raise their hands. So in those cases, those people will probably just need to unmute and indicate by unmuting, or possibly even just speak up that, that they would like to speak.
Okay, okay, thank you, and because this is help me watch for that, Mr. McNeeley, so we get everyone included in this hearing this evening. So the first one that I saw go up, it is an individual with the first name Sharon Frasca, that's all I can see.
Thank you, Commissioner, my name is Sharon Frasca Williams. I live at 7427 Daisy Drive in Williams, my property is probably less than a quarter of, is less than a quarter of a mile from the applicant's property. As the crow flies, it's probably like an eighth of a mile from the applicant's property. I'm sorry, I did not write a letter, that was my intention upon seeing the change of zoning ordinance. I'm sorry to say, I have some family emergencies and some other things that required me to go back to California, and I wasn't able to do that. But anyways, I do have many, many concerns. And, you know, I'm looking at the applicant's Hip Camp website at www.hippcamp.com. And he starts about, we started in 2019 with a piece of untouched hilly land and created a natural sanctuary for mindful retreats. I'm concerned that this property has been doing this operation since 2019 without the proper legal permission to do so. In this website, it says you're welcome, oh, I'm sorry, we have three glamping yards open half the year. A tiny A-frame cabin, which is open year round. A yoga deck, a sauna, a cold tub, composting bathrooms and open air hot showers. It also goes on to state, you're welcome to walk around exploring to see what animals you might see. We also offer four day yoga retreats, which run most weekends from Friday through Monday. Yoga classes, guided hikes, Reiki massage and sauna use are available as add-ons for any guests. I don't know if the applicant is licensed for these massages and Reiki and some of these other things. If he is not, then that would mean that there would be employees coming on to the property. Again, which would increase the usage of our Spring Flower Road. Speaking, I'm sorry, Spring Valley Road.
You're at, you're at, you're at less than one minute left on your time.
I'm sorry?
You're at less than one minute left on your time, just want to let you know.
Okay, Spring Valley Road is very narrow, is very windy, and there are pits on each side. And my concern is, of course, traffic on the road. And the county is not really great at maintaining this road as much as everybody would want to believe. With, I'm also concerned about the signage, the applicant states there would be no signage there on the road. However, that means if people get lost in the dark, they're going to, the first turnout is going to be at Tulip, which is where Spring Flower Ranch is. I think this is, this is not conducive, I did not buy here to live next to a campground. There were other opportunities for me to purchase. One of my purchase decisions here in 2017 was to be away from such type of activity and transits coming into the neighborhood. Now, staff reports, you know, I couldn't disagree more with the staff reports. The staff does not live here, they don't drive this road in all types of conditions. And we're concerned, of course, about fire and what my other neighbors have expressed.
Sharon, that was, that was your three minutes, so.
Thank you, Ms. Frasca Williams, and yes, the three minutes does go by fast. But I did make note of your comments, so you were heard. I, the next second person, it looks like Kim Chris. Who would that be? Americ, Amara, I cannot read the full last name, Amerman, and Justin.
And Clarissa Townsend. Yeah, we're two families, the Amerman Townsend family.
Okay, all right, please, the person speaking, please state your name and address for the record. And your three minutes will begin.
Hi, good afternoon or good evening, I'd like to thank everybody for allowing us some time to participate with this very serious nature of business. My name is Kim Amerman, I represent the Amerman Townsend household at 2872 East Spring Valley Road here in Williams. And I sent a late submission in regards to my opposition. So I would just like to briefly read that to you, if I'm allowed. Basically, we wanted to say that we expressly and strongly oppose to this establishment of a campground in our rural residential area. As a concerned resident who values the tranquility and character of our community, we believe that allowing such a commercial venture would have detrimental effects on the quality of life for the residents and the integrity of our neighborhood. There are several key concerns that we would like to bring to your attention regarding the proposed campground site beyond all the other already brought to your attention by other parcel owners. Firstly, our residential zoning regulations were intended to preserve the natural area of our community and to promote the well-being of its residents. Allowing a commercial operation like our campground site would be inconsistent with these objectives and could set a troubling precedent for future development in our very precious area. Furthermore, the proposed campground would introduce significant safety hazards to already narrow and winding rural roads with the potential of up to six to 10 additional automobiles per night accessing the sites. There is a heightened risk of accidents, particularly at this blind corner and the intersections where this parcel intersects the road. The purpose, this purpose is a serious threat to all of our safety as residents and visitors, especially those who may be unfamiliar with the navigating of rural driving conditions. In addition to safety concerns, the introduction of a campground would undoubtedly disrupt the peace and quiet of the residents that cherish our, cherish our rural setting. As many of us can attest, sound carries remarkably well in our valley, and the activities associated with the campground would likely generate noise levels that extend far beyond the immediate vicinity of this property. This would have a detrimental impact on the quality of life for the residents, as well as the enjoyment of our natural surroundings.
You've got a little, little less than a minute left, just want to let you know.
Okay, okay, so we basically were agreeing with everybody, you know, and how they started their operations before they had permits, so they had disregard to what they needed to do to do things legally. We disagree with the traffic. They say that the traffic and the studies are not going to be impactful, I don't know how they can say that. At that many cars coming in and out in a six month period, you're looking at increased traffic of a thousand cars. We also would like to say that we disagree with the way that we were all notified or not notified. We are exactly 1.2 miles from this property, and we had no notification until we drove by and saw the sign posted at the entrance. So again, I'd like to thank everybody for their time and consideration, and we would be open to further discussion.
Okay, thank you, this is Charant Tiveris, thank you for your comments. The next individual is Jennifer and I would like to ask everybody who is not speaking at this time, and that's only Jennifer Rindak, please mute.
Hi, this is Jennifer and Douglas Rindak, we're at 1791 Gold Trap Trail, Williams. I just have a handful of questions. So is the water tank, is that already installed at the top of the hill? And I don't know if Zach can just answer these as I go, or if they just have to be noted.
Okay, I'm going to note them, so just go through them at this time.
Okay, so I'd like to know if the water tank is already installed. And if so, how does he fill it? Because my husband and I did visit with Zach and visited the property in November of 2023. And that's, I don't see how a water truck could access that right now. My other comment was on the fire pits, would it be seven? Because I would kind of assume they'd want one for the house. And then is the site plan that he proposed, is it to scale? Because I didn't feel that was to scale. And the A-frame house that exists currently, when we were there, it looks like that's still on the site, and then they're adding another tent site. And then I was wondering if guests drive themselves, or if they pick up guests at the airport. And that is all my questions.
Okay, thank you, I have noted those. And I'm going to, that's all you have right now?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I've noted those questions, and they will come up later. The next individual I'm going to call on is Michael Osband.
Okay, my name is Valerie, and I'm here with my husband, Michael Osband. We're at 2582 East Spring Valley Road. I'm not going to repeat everything that's, you know, been said. I think that Kim did it very eloquently when she read the letter, she touched all the bases, the things we're concerned about. And Michael and I bought our property in 2007, so we've owned it for quite a while now. And our reason was to be out here. We are not looking for businesses to be around us. We're looking for the quiet and the peace that we get out here. And the safety, and safety from fire is something we're always concerned about. Also, the safety on the road and what has been noted about the, the location on the road where it's windy and it's, you know, very hard to see, can't imagine people turning in and out in the dark when they don't know where they're going. And the sun comes in the morning when you're driving that road, the sun. Well, it's actually in the evening when you're driving that road, the sun is right in your eyes, it's very blinding. So, and when you're coming back this way, we're further, we pass that, their property every day. But when you're coming back this way, then you're getting it in the, in the morning when it's coming up. But anyway, we are looking at the safety as far as fire, traffic, the noise issues, all of the things that have already been stated. So I don't want to waste your time continuing on, but we also were not notified until we saw the sign just recently that went up. They posted it on their property. If we had known sooner, we would have made a better effort to note our concerns. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Osband. All right, Mr. McNeeley, please help me identify the individuals that are calling in via phone.
Will do, so I see three phones here, three phone numbers, a 813 would be the top one of my list, 813 area code. See if we can get the whole thing here. Ending in 2555, it is unmuted. So Madam Chair, if you wanted to invite that caller to speak.
Yes, if that caller heard that number, go ahead and please address the commission. And Mr. McNeeley, I will tell you, for whatever reason, I am not seeing the information you're seeing. I've got no numbers, so you're really going to have to help me out here to make sure everyone's heard. All right, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, can you hear me? My name is Stephen Strickly.
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I own a total of approximately 43 acres just to the west of this property under consideration in a combination of, under my name and also my wife's and my trust. My home is at 1373 East San Marcos, that's accessed by Hockter Road and then up the hill to East San Marcos. I own three parcels there on East San Marcos, where my house is, and then one on each side, which is empty right now, and also I own a own a property down below on North Ogbywell. And then I own a 38 acre section above East San Marcos Road. And that parcel number I can give you is 20202008T. And that parcel number I can give you is 20202008T. I split that with the Hess's a few years ago. And I'm just over, that's just over the fence from this proposed campground. And I want to say that, as other people have said, that this campground is completely out of character with the rest of this hillside neighborhood, which is virtually all owner-occupied, single-family dwellings. And we all came here, came to this neighborhood for quiet and privacy, not for enjoying drunken sing-alongs around the campfire, I'm sorry to say. I want to say my main concerns, I'll enumerate them. Number one, noise from vehicles, generators, loud music, loud people, barking dogs. And I want to say I'd heard a lot of yelling and noise coming from that property over the past couple of years, and I was wondering what was going on. And now I know that they, you know, had campers over there outdoors. Number two, trash. It's a high-wind area, and any trash that is loose gets blown up the hill. It happens to any of us where our cans get turned over. And if there's people camping out there, that part, that trash can end up up the hill. It'll be carried by coyotes and other animals as well. Number three, likely trespassing. People are going to want to jump that fence and hike up the hill to get to the top of that mountain. People have already done that. I've seen where somebody jumped that fence in the past couple of years and gathered, cut wood off of the Hess's property and threw it over the fence.
Hey, sir, you're a little under a minute left.
Okay, thank you. Number four, my number one concern, fire danger. As I said, this is a high-wind area and outdoor campfires, which none of us do out there. You know, anytime somebody has an outdoor fire, everybody else comes running, say, what's going on? You shouldn't be having a fire out here. It's a ridiculous thing to have on that hillside with the winds that we have coming through that are often in excess of 50 miles an hour. People are going to be having campfires, cooking outdoors, and one thing you can't regulate is outdoor smoking. People are going to be smoking out there, smoking cigarettes and whatnot. And, you know, they're not familiar with just how high the the danger is in this area. And a discarded butt on a windy day could easily cause a fire that would sweep across that hill and burn us all out. A 2,500-gallon water tank on that hillside would be like spitting on a fire, do nothing. With high wind going up that hill and no access, there's no vehicle access to the upper part of that hill. There's no way that the fire department could get up there and do anything about it. It would just go and burn that whole hill.
Your three minutes is up if you want to wrap up.
Okay, I just wanted to say that the least result would be reduced property values and increased insurance costs for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. There is another. Mr. McNeely, I see three unknown users, but I don't see anyone unmuted. Do you?
No, so I see three, I see, well, I now see a guest raising a hand, a Frank Steigerwald, if you wanted to give him a mentor.
Yes, I do. Mr. Steigerwald, please address the commission.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Frank Steigerwald. I live at 1846 East Maggie Drive. My property, if the little gold star you saw to the east of their property, I'm right behind that little gold star to the next property over. I currently am looking at a giant white yurt on the side of that hillside, which I've been looking at for the last two years, wondering why it was there. Now I know. And my biggest concern, everybody has stated all the concerns, I agree with all those concerns, is fire. And what nobody has mentioned here is that fire is a volunteer fire department. Chief Trotter has a second job as a paramedic in town. He's never there. Everything is volunteer. It's hit and miss. Will they be there? Will they not be there? Guaranteed, there's no access up the side of that hill. These things are, it just, there's just no way that they're going to be able to get a fire out on the side of that hill in any reasonable amount of time. Like the last caller said, I agree 100%. 2,500 gallons would put out a couple of campfires, and it'll be gone. That's it. So I appreciate your time, and that's the one thing I wanted to mention. That is a volunteer fire department. Chief Trotter has a second full-time job. And it's hit and miss. High country fires, hit and miss. There's no, there's no immediate time. There's no immediate to get there. Whoever's on call, maybe they'll get there, maybe they won't. The rest of the concerns are we'll be able to completely agree with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steigerwald. All right, Mr. McNeely, are you seeing anyone, anyone unmuted?
Yes, Madam Chair, I see one unmuted. It's a 928-3500735. So I think that could be the next one.
Okay, would that individual with that number please address the commission, stating your name and address, and then begin with your comments, please?
Actually, 35 is muted, 74 is not.
Yeah. 74 is now the unmuted one, if we want to go to that one.
Okay, with the individual with that number, please address the commission, stating your name and address, and then continuing with comments.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Tosi. I live at 2938 East Green Tree Lane. You have my letter of opposition in the file. And I am vastly concerned about the fire danger that is here. That's already been alluded to, the traffic, the noise potential for those who don't drive in the county at night. You don't understand how dangerous it is and how dark it is, with the exception of a couple residents that are flaunting dark skies. That's, again, is a concern that affects the area significantly. We need to either enforce the rules that are here or change them around and make this, make this like Mesa or Glendale, Arizona. So it's just as a total community of housing and other stuff. We've lived here since 2017 and enjoy the the fact that it's dark out here, and we love it. We see elk come through our yard. And we've had deer come through. So it's, it's one to where it's, it's one of a disruption to what we like to have out here. Again, again, we are in opposition. My neighbor signed my letter. And again, thank you for hearing us and having a holding of the meeting. So here are the concerns. Again, Spring Valley Road, the county says they maintain it. They marked deterrent areas of last year and did not correct them until last week. So, no, they don't maintain the road the way they said. They don't follow the complaints about dark skies, and we need to make sure that they, they do need to monitor that. Sorry, staff. Again, Commissioner Antovereis, Chairman, thank you very much for hearing us. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Mr. McNeely, do you see another, do you see another one? I'm not seeing numbers like you are.
There is a, there is a Kathy who noted in the chat. She was raising her hand. I don't see her hand raised, but I see a Kathy. So I think Kathy has indicated that she would like to speak, so I think you could recognize her next, and she could unmute and speak.
Absolutely. Okay, Kathy, would you please unmute and address the commission with your name, address, and then your comments?
Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, hi, this is going to be a two-way one because I'll have something to say, but I also have another lady here who would like to have something to say. And she can go first, if that's okay.
Okay, and I'm going to need each of you to speak your name and address for the record. And each of you can have three minutes, so I'd like to ask that you go one at a time. And Mr. McNeely, please go ahead and monitor the time.
Will do.
All right, please proceed.
Don't you need my name and address?
Yes, I do need whoever is going to speak first. You indicated that there are two of you. You can each have three minutes apiece. So whoever is speaking first, name and address, comments, and then the second person, name and address and comments, please.
Got it. Thank you.
My name is Judy Small. I live at 7,001 Hazelwood Drive. And my, our property joins up at the creek bed in the back with this proposed camping. And I'll begin by saying, we, those who live here, do not want this camp. How many will, how many restrooms will there be? Will there be a concept of, what, they're going to compost? What's going to happen to the compost? Where will this group meals be made? Who will oversee the weed management? Where will you park 10 cars? I don't want strangers, multiple strangers, tempted to wander on our property. The camp is going to give nothing to the, nothing to the area, and it's adding more people to chase away our wildlife. Does his insurance cover damage to our property? Because I can guarantee people aren't going to listen to him. They're going to flip over to our property, and they're going to start grouching around and seeing what they can find. While we realize this camp, again, brings nothing to the community, what does it bring to the county? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Kathy, you are next.
Yes, I'm ready to go.
Yep, name and address and comments.
My name is Kathy Bates. My address is 1791 East Spring Valley Road. Okay, so I have, I'd sent in a letter, and it was addressed for reasons why this proposal should be denied. And I've, I've been, we've been, I've been working with the city. They let me in, they answered my questions, and they kept saying, you know, you need to look in these areas. And one of them was the objectives. It's the first page of the comprehensive, the book. And so I did that, and I picked four little things, four ways or four goals that the county has put in that, in that. Yeah, and so I'm just going to do one of them, and that was as for economic growth. And when, when we had the community missed, the community. Meeting. Meeting. I'm losing my, my thoughts. Okay, anyway, in that meeting, when we, when the person was asked why he wanted to offer yoga retreat, he responded, responded for income. When asked, what would we do if the proposal was turned down? His answer, get a job somewhere. And when we asked him, how does this project benefit the surrounding neighbors? His first response was jobs, but then later he said that he and another person were staying on the property, and they would run the hotels. So where did the jobs go? They don't, they didn't come. And growth means jobs, but a small business like a campground that is only open 180 days each year would have trouble paying higher wages. They, there were three policies that I'm bending this on. One was to support businesses that create long-term, stable economic growth. I don't think a campground has that long-term, stable economic growth. Another one was supporting businesses that develop or provide higher wages. Even if he had someone working for him, he wouldn't have the money to pay a higher wage. And the last one is to seek businesses compatible with the environment and the benefit of the communities. And there are no benefits that the community is going to get from this, from this project.
Kathy, you're about 30 seconds left.
That's okay, I'm done. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. McNeely, are you seeing any other hands raised or unmutes that I'm not?
Madam Chair, I don't see any other hands raised or unmutes. We still have, let's see, two, one phone number, which has not, they may not be choosing to speak, but there's one phone number I'm seeing here, 928-444-7017. So if that person at 928-444-717017 would like to speak, if you could raise your hand. Oh, Madam Chair, we just had a jam.
Okay, now I do. Yeah. What I'm going to do is I'm going to let the individual that was on the phone, Jan, I do see your hand raised, and I'm going to call on you next. So with the person on the phone, go ahead and address the commission, state your name and address, and then your comments, please.
Yes, my name is George Lockhart. I live at 1693 Gold Trap Trail. So we're just right down the road from this. You know, everybody's brought up just about everything, the road, the fire, water issues, wildlife issues, how it benefits the community. It won't. You know, I, I don't even see where there was an application made. Quite a long time ago, I received a letter, and then they were going to have some kind of Skype discussion. And then that was the end of it. And now, you know, we see this other, they posted signs at the corners of the property. You know, I assumed this whole thing was over and done, but apparently it just keeps dragging on. And listening in on this, I don't even see what is a proposal at all. Nobody can actually say, we're going to do this, we're going to have this many fire pits, we're going to have water here, this is going to take care of the, any medical emergency. It's all, well, we'll just try to figure it out as we go. And that's actually not the way it's supposed to be done. So I hope the county board of supervisors will not go for it and let us all live in peace up there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lockhart. And Jan, you are up. Name, address, and comments, please.
My name is Jan McKernan. Our property is located at 2864 East Spring Valley Road. We do not have a residence there. However, we are looking to build at some point in the not-too-distant future. We've been down to our property several times, and that road is difficult to navigate for people who don't drive it all the time. We're, we're very careful as we come down there, but again, we've been down there numerous times. That is a tough corner where the proposed property is. I think that there should be consideration for the people who do live there and the people who are continuing to explore the area for, for living, that a campground at that particular place doesn't seem like it would fit in, doesn't seem like it really has the interest of that, of that community at heart. And honestly, I didn't ever get notification that this was an issue, that this was going on, except that we have friends who live there, and they sent me a picture, and I believe it was from the Ammermans, who took a photo of the public notification at the property. So had no idea and haven't had time to explore this and really do our research. But at this point, I would totally be against this without it being completely vetted. My concern is also because of the fire chief. It's a volunteer. He has a full-time job. How, how well-trained are they in being able to say, yeah, a 2,500-gallon container would be able to, you know, help quell some major fire? I, I'm not a firefighter, but I don't think that's going to do it. And again, how would you get the water up there if it's steep and it's, there's no road that goes to the top of that property? So concerns on our end? Yeah, not for it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All righty, Mr. McNeely, I am again. I am again not seeing any hands raised or unmutes. Are you seeing something I'm not?
Madam Chair, no, I am not seeing any hands raised or unmutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. And a couple of the questions that were asked, I would like to run by you. The first one, has the 2,500 gallon water tank been installed on this property?
Madam Chair, my understanding is that it hasn't. And that's something that's currently in discussion with the fire chief. And I wanted to be clear about the way that we typically, as staff, have our applicants interact with fire chiefs for these cases. It can take a lot of money for people to invest to go through all of that process, install everything as recommended with the fire chief. If they were to do that prior to the application and they got denied, they could be in the hole quite a bit. And we do, you know, we trust that we know that we can work on the backend prior to any sort of occupancy to, to get all those things figured out with the fire chief. But my short answer to your question is that my understanding is that it's not. And the applicant might be able to tell us otherwise, but I don't recall seeing it there.
Okay, thank you. I think that you, you have answered the question adequately. And the only other one that I do want to bring up, do you know, this might be a question for the applicant, do you know if all of the individuals will be driving? Or if there is going to be a pickup? And if there is a pickup location, where is that location?
Chair Taveris, my understanding from the narrative was that the applicant was going to encourage their guests to carpool. So I, my understanding, I believe, is that people would be driving to the property and not being picked up at the airport.
Okay, okay. So if I'm understanding this correctly, if there are, there are six campsites, two per person, there could be potentially 12 cars, 12 people coming in? If they didn't.
Right, that could be possible. And the applicant might be able to clarify that further, what their plan is.
Okay, before we do, before I move to commission discussion, I would like the applicant to answer each of those questions, please. Number one, the fire, the water tank. And I do just want to say that I understand, Mr. Schwartz, your explanation on getting things approved before actual money is put out on the development. So with that, would the applicant please address those two questions?
Yes, Chairman, I do have a smaller water tank installed up the hill that I pump water to, just in case of emergencies. But I don't have the larger ones installed yet. As Mr. Schwartz was saying, I don't want to make thousands of dollars in investment until the project is approved.
Okay, and can you address the driving in or picking up? And if there is a pickup location, where would that be?
Yes, most of our guests drive in themselves. We allow one car per campsite. And then after they get here, we do do shuttling to the Grand Canyon that we have permits for guiding in the Grand Canyon. So we shuttle people to the Grand Canyon and back. So people, once they're here, they do, they don't drive around and about. They just come in and they stay. So our, our events are mostly retreats, so they're weekend things. So all the people all come in on Thursday or Friday and then they all leave on Monday. And usually, per event, we usually have four cars, maybe five. We encourage people to carpool.
Okay, all right. Thank you for those answers. With that, again, not seeing any hands raised or any additional public. I'm gonna close it to the public comment section and open it up at commission discussion. Usually. Let's see.
Madam Chair, there's someone speaking. I think this is from this, this from the 928-380-5766 phone number.
Is that someone we've heard from?
I thought we had, yes.
No, ma'am.
Okay, please go ahead. State your name and address and then your comments, please.
Okay, my name is Robert Small, 7,001 North Hazelwood Drive. Okay, my property backs up against about 300 feet of his property. Okay, we haven't talked about trash. I'm talking about paper bags, plastic, any, any, any type of trash. Wind coming right over this way and it's gonna come over onto my property. Okay, number two, my big question as a county is, you have, or he has a 2,500 gallon water tank. As I understand, even a dwelling has to have at least a 2,000 gallon water tank for one building. You've got seven plus one more permanent residents. I think you're lacking a lot on your capacity of your water. Number two, I used to be assistant fire chief or co-fire chief with the Fire, High Country Fire and Rescue. It is nothing for somebody to walk out behind a tree, smoking and gonna relieve himself and flip his cigarette. I've done it thousands of times going up Highway 64. Okay. We have, we have to address this system. What kind of trash are they gonna deal with? And water system, the response time for the fire department is approximately 20 minutes. And you know what can happen in 20 minutes. What kind of liability is he gonna carry for the adjacent properties, houses and acreage? We have no idea. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Small.
Well, that cut everybody off.
Madam Chair, looks like you are muted again.
Oh, and I was. Thank you, Mr. McNeeley. Let's do a final sweep. Is there anyone that you are seeing that I am not, that is either unmuted or hand raised?
No, no, I'm not.
All right, then I'm gonna go ahead and close it to the public and open it at commission discussion. Commissioner Wilson, would you please start this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the public comment. I especially appreciate Ms. Bates' letter that was very thoroughly thought out and, and detailed. I personally have some serious concerns with respect to what we don't know about this project at this point. There seems to be an awful lot of ambiguity about exactly how the emergency services may or may not be provided and how effective those might be in this remote location. And then, of course, the impact that would cause on the neighbors. As a result of that, I have a real challenge with finding number two, and I will leave it there.
Okay, thank you. I'm making notes here. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Tohe.
Thank you, everybody. I think all the people who made presentations and also the staff and also the, the people who are living in this area. I, I just want to say that there, I feel like there are some very, some questions that are unanswered. And I'm especially really concerned about the fact that there's not a plan coming from, from fire, from, from the, from Chief Trotter and just having those unknowns around that is, is quite concerning to me. So at this point, I think I'd just like to maybe hear some of the other concerns. But for me right now, I, I have some conflicting thoughts about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tohe. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. I, you know, I typically really like these small, you know, a little more homespun efforts to provide some things and make a little bit of money. And there's a lot of great things about this, the sighting of this. But I, I just don't have a great feeling about the appropriateness of this location. And certainly, a lot of the neighboring property owners don't either. But, you know, fire is my number one thing. And, you know, trespassing, it's just gonna happen unless they fence the whole piece of property, which, you know, I think we've talked to some other campground, prospective campground developers about doing that. People have no idea where they're going. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not fully committed to this being the right location. So I guess I'll just stop there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, the opposition has brought a pretty well-organized and, and cogent opposition to, to us this evening. You know, finding number one consistent with the ordinance, we do have campgrounds allowed on 10 acres in this zone. That might be something in the long run we wanna look at, but at this point, it is allowed. They are allowed. A couple of months ago, we really got into the weeds on, on fire protection, on a case, which you will remember. And then we found out that we did not have jurisdiction to do that. So that puts me in an awkward position. I'd like more details on fire protection. At the same time, we are gonna put our faith in the Fire Safety and Emergency Response Plan, put together by the fire chief. And it, my understanding is it's kind of beyond our jurisdiction. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, staff. Obviously, fire is a huge consideration. One thing I would do is put no smoking in the conditions. The applicant has offered it, but I always want to make sure that if the property changes hands, we're not relying on an applicant's verbal promise. We want to make sure that important conditions will pass on to a new property owner. So I, I would like to hear what everybody has to say. And as far as sound, I think the 50 decibels that the property line is probably appropriate. We could say no electrical generators, but it doesn't sound like there would be any anywhere, anyway. That was a consideration I was thinking about earlier. But really, it comes down, a lot of it comes down to the Fire Safety and Emergency Response Plan. I don't think there's gonna be a huge amount of traffic out here. I don't think that's gonna be an issue, but fire safety is absolutely paramount. And whether or not we should continue this and review that ourselves, whether that's within our jurisdiction, I'm, I'm actually not clear right now. So maybe staff could help us with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bass. Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you. I guess you can hear me this time, so.
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I did visit the site with Mr. Schwartz. There was, on my part, no ex parte discussion to the applicant other than to introduce myself and inform him that I am a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, with that mandatory part out of the way, couple of observations about the property itself. Substantial amount of juniper, as Mr. Schwartz has noted. And that, because it is on an uphill slope and I know what the winds in that area are like, very much like that in an area that I'm very familiar with, much to the east on Spring Valley Road. So that is an issue. The junipers are very easy to light off. They tend to, the branches grow very down, very much close to the ground. So the idea of having any fire pit at all is a real problem for me with this. Second thing is that the issue is smoking. You know, just telling people you can't smoke, that's not going to stop it. No trespassing signs, as the neighbors have noted, who own property adjacent and close by, with a wildlife-friendly fence, which is what we would require, it's not gonna stop that either. The other thing is that the issue of the road, I really took note of that when we drove out there. Everybody is fortunate that there is some degree of pavement on the road. But as far as being narrow and winding, you bet. I know what it's like to drive on roads like that at night. And some people just don't know how to manage that. The other thing is relative to the slope going uphill. And as one of these speakers pointed out, going uphill to the peak of the uphill part to the west, that is something that some people would refer to as an attractive nuisance. People are going to do it no matter what. So that's another of my concerns. And the other thing is, after hearing from the neighbors, I've read the letters. I listened very closely to the comments. I have lived in areas like this many, many years ago and in a semi-rural area right now. The, this is completely out of character with the neighborhood. And in terms of fire, I think that when we look at the second finding, health, safety and welfare, it is our responsibility to consider the probability that if a fire starts, that it's going to be out of control extremely quickly. And I think deserves due diligence on the part of this commission to look at that thoroughly. And my thinking is that that with relation to finding number two, is not something that is beyond our jurisdiction. We have to consider the effects that everything has on the neighbors with the concerns that they have expressed. With that, I'll turn this discussion over to everyone else on the commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Chair Aunt Taveris. And I do want to state for the record that I have thoroughly read the staff report. I have read all of the letters, both in opposition and the three that came in today for support. I have listened to the staff report this evening. I have listened to the applicant's presentation. And I have heard all of the public comments that were expressed during the public comment portion. I will say that I do agree with the concerns that have been brought up by my other fellow commissioners regarding, regarding the safety issue, which is number two. But the one finding that I am unable to make in order to approve this case is condition number four, excuse me, finding number four. And I want to read this because I want, I want everyone to know, the applicant and all of the, the people in the public to know how I reached my conclusion. Finding number four that has to be made, all four findings must be made by us as commissioners in order to approve a request. If we cannot make any, any one of the findings, any commissioner would not be able to make the approval. So number four, the finding number four that would have to be met, that the proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives and policies of the general plan or specific plan for the area. This area has a, comes in under the Red Lake Area Plan Goals and Policies. The one policy or goal and policy that I do not believe meets is the review of conditional use permits for commercial or other non-commercial, non-residential uses in residential zones shall consider the impacts of the proposed use on area residents. On particularly noise, dust and visual impacts, all of which have been brought up by the public this evening. And I think that this is probably, I think it's one of those things that it's a good idea, but not the right place. And what I mean by that is that on paper, this actually looks like a pretty good development. It's off of a paved, county-maintained road. It's relatively close to the fire department, but like everyone pointed out, we do not have a fire district in this area. It is a volunteer fire department. And we are all fully aware that it can take some time to get there. So I am not able to make the findings number two and number four. Like Commissioner Williams said, I am, I am supportive. I am generally always, the answer is yes until it's not. And I like the idea of it. But I just have to say that it's, in my opinion, it is in the wrong place. And I cannot make findings number two or four, so I will not be able to approve this request this evening. And we can go back, and that's all I have to say. That's where I'm at, and that is going to be my decision. So we can go back up. I'm going to run back through the commissioners. And beginning with you, Commissioner Wilson, and I would like to ask Sharon Frasca-Williams, could you please turn off your camera? Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to add, and I appreciate the fellow commissioners' comments.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe?
Thank you. I will say that I agree with not finding the findings, and so that will be my vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Tohe. Commissioner Williams?
Um, yeah, I, I think I'm of the mind that I, I love the idea. It's conditions two and four are leading me to feel like it's just not the right location.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bass?
I think that the quote that Madam Chair made from the area plan was telling and kind of pushes me over the edge. The fire safety is very important, but could be something we could conceivably work out. But we don't have any enthusiastic neighbors. So I don't believe I can make two and four. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bass. Commissioner Ruggles?
Thank you. I really appreciate you mentioning the, the area plan because that simply reinforces the aspect of the comp plan that tells you we have to consider what it does for the neighborhood. And that's a pretty good-sized neighborhood. And I was very pleasantly surprised with what I saw when I was out there with staff in that respect. Now, for that reason, I also have considered finding number four. And in that respect, and I believe I did mention the impact on the surrounding area in the neighborhood and how it can change that surrounding neighborhood, I cannot make finding number four either. One thing I would like to point out is that the way the zoning ordinance is written, comprehensive plan is written and the area plans are written, allow the flexibility for this commission to look at those aspects and say, well, one size does not fit all. And that it's on a location-by-location basis when we look at this. And when we do, to me, like I said, I cannot make finding number two and four. So I guess that pretty well sums up where my vote on this is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Chair Ontiveris, and I don't I have been thoughtful as I've heard the other commissioners going through. I'm going to call it round two of the comments. And I don't believe that I have anything additional left to say. It does look like we are headed to a motion to deny. So I will accept a motion. Any second, please, at this time.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we deny CUP two-four-dash-zero-zero-nine.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to deny CUP twenty-four-zero-zero-nine. And a second by Commissioner Ruggles. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Bass?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Ontiveris, and I also vote aye. The motion to deny passes unanimously. I do want to reiterate to the applicant at this time. If you disagree with the decision that this commission has made this evening, you can appeal this decision to the Board of Supervisors. You will need to do that within a fifteen-day time period. And I would direct you to contact Community Development, contact Mr. Schwartz, and he can help direct you and how to go about that if that is something that you do want to do. With that, I'm going to the final item on the agenda is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, my clock shows seven forty-seven PM and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Chair and Commissioners, have a good night.
Thank you.
I haven't.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
We have an item or public?
Zach, what's your question?
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
No, I just, I just have a, a new item to bring up for the public forum.
Well, Zach, the hearing is over for that, but if you.
It has nothing to do with my property.
Yeah, the, the hearing, the hearing, unfortunately, Zach, you, you just missed. The chair asked if there was anyone who wanted to go to the.
I said that I did. As she was talking, she never stopped talking.
Sorry, we, I apologize, missed that. The chair, the commission meets once a month, and all of their agendas always have that call to the public for items not on the agenda.
I had my hand raised and I also was speaking.
Yeah, I apologize. That's, yeah, the chair actually does a pretty good job running the meeting, but the chair, the chair did close the meeting and we've now lost a quorum. So you can, if you have a separate item, pardon?
Yes.
Yeah, if you have, if you have something to discuss with the commission as a, an item not on the agenda, you can certainly do that next month at the, at the P and Z Commission hearing next month. And of course, staff would be happy to, to discuss whatever it is with you anytime.
I do want to let you know, Zach, that I'm going to be out for a week starting tomorrow. But any of the other planners, if you call the mainline, are going to be happy to help you.
Yes, I just, I would like to file the appeal.
Okay, you'll just send a letter to probably Jess. What do you think, Jess?
Yeah, you can, you can send, you can just send a, send an email to me indicating that you would like to appeal the commission's decision. And your, your rationale, your reasons why you'd like to appeal their decision. And then we will work with the clerk of the board to, to get your appeal on the Board of Supervisors hearing.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, the meeting's closed, so have a good night. Thanks.